Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. Would the clerk please take the go.
Mr. Charlin, Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick, Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lovell President?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, this is Councilman Gross. I'm actually on Zoom. Yeah, Barb Warwick here too, on Zoom. Thanks.
Thank you both.
My pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic as the which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one. Councilwoman Smith?
I'm chasing out of your house. Will the folks for Castor Binion please come forward? Everyone, come up with him. I have to tell my little story about myself and Housing Authority. When I first got elected, my district felt like they were saturated with Housing Authority properties, especially in Sheridan and parts of Crafton Heights and Elliot. And so every chance I got, I think I ranked Housing Authority over the coals every minute, every chance I got. And you weren't even the director. Castor Binion wasn't the director at the time. But I just continued as he got on board. And he did such an amazing job at working with the community that felt so angry towards Housing Authority. Every meeting that they had, they had somebody there explaining. They looked into properties every time they had an issue or concern. At one point in Sheridan, they gave me a hundred and some properties to look at and thought they were all Housing Authority properties and they were causing issues in the community. Well, at this time, Castor Binion was the director. They had them looked into every one of those parcels. And when they were done looking into those parcels, what they found was that only seven of them were Housing Authority properties. All the others were absentee landlords and problem properties. And since then, he's been working with us in the community. And I just want to thank you and your amazing team. They do a lot of great things in the city of Pittsburgh. And I know it's not always easy, especially in a time when affordable housing is not so plentiful or doesn't seem to be so plentiful. Although I think it's plentiful, I think we need to turn those properties over to people, the vacant properties over to people for housing. And so I will say that for that, I'm going to read this. I thought it was time to make sure that we honored you and your team's effort for a lot of the things that they're doing. Whereas Castor Binion has served as the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh and Allies and Ross Management and Development Corporation, Incorporated, and its subsidiaries since February of 2013. And whereas, as Executive Director, Mr. Binion manages an annual budget of roughly $200 million and is responsible for the operations of roughly 2,300 units of low-income public housing, 5,500 housing choice vouchers, and 1,000 mixed finance housing units. And whereas, Mr. Binion has led several major affordable housing initiatives and has created more than 1,000 new affordable housing units developed through the initiative, award-winning project-based voucher gap financing program, including Cedarwood Homes in Ferrywood, and one of the first, it is one of the first affordable senior housing communities located in the West End neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas additionally, Mr. Binion has led efforts to infuse special services to HCV program, including the implementation of the HUD-VAS program, which has successfully housed more than 100 formerly homeless veterans. And I do want to make sure that I add that I think at that time, former Mayor Paduta was also instrumental in that. So I'm going to make sure I mention that. And whereas, in addition to spearheading the Housing Authority's, Housing Authority development efforts, Mr. Binion leads the agency's endeavors to provide residential residents of the LIPH and HCV programs with quality services such as voucher vocational training, employment assistance, crisis support, quality of life enhancements for senior citizens, educational opportunities, and recreational activities for youth, as well as onsite 24-hour daycare center, robust resident employment initiatives, and innovative mobile digital literacy program. And whereas, before Mr. Binion began his career in the Housing Authority, in the housing industry, Mr. Binion led a distinguished career as a paratrooper in the United States Army, serving during Operation Desert Storm and ultimately retiring in 1992. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Castor Binion for his service to the City of Pittsburgh and thank him for his service to our country. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 10th, 2024 to be Castor Binion Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
You know this means you have to move to District Two now, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You want to say a few words? Do we have a member of the board?
Yes.
Councilman Mosley.
First, I'd like to thank the residents of the City of Pittsburgh and all the residents who participated with the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh, my staff, the board who provide direction, HUD, and all the community partners for all the things that we have done as far as choice neighborhood. And we got lots of stuff to do as far as affordable housing. And each of the City Council members who I've met with one-on-one, who provide me advice on affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh, I want to thank you for your advice. And most of all, I want to thank my wife, who put up with me. And so she has done an excellent job. But affordable housing, the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh, our imagination continues to grow as we try to find affordable housing for the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you. My wife, see that's why my wife is here. She remind me, my employees who does an excellent job. They're very dedicated. They work long hours. And I always tell them, they will always receive a plus when they try to get into heaven. Only they have to say, I work for the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Is there a member of the council? Do you want to say a few words? And do you want to say a few words too? You can say yours while we're waiting.
Thank you, President Emeritus. You know, I've been on the board for only a few months and really want to thank Executive Director Binion for being a great partner already, being very responsive when constituents reach out to me in the district, you know, for issues. And you and Amy are always Johnny on the spot. So, you know, thank you so much. And also thank you for your willingness to, you know, really, you know, live by your words of being imaginative and creative and coming to the table as we're trying to figure out, you know, how to meet a level of affordability in the new Bakery Square development. And that was a really powerful meeting we had a couple of months ago. So I look forward to continuing to work with you and being creative and being imaginative, you know, and meeting, you know, this mandate to provide more affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
So Council President Emeritus, I want to steal your thunder on, on the thing you always say, you know, that you know where Mr. Binion lives.
You're District?
District Three. District Three. So I, you know, Mr. Binion especially is coming into office here. We've worked really closely with you and your staff here. And I know we're talking a lot about your housing affordability programs here. The biggest thing that I want to thank you and thank your staff for this is that you guys are incredibly responsive. I was gonna, I was thinking about which names I wanted to say, but I will probably forget one. But you guys really do a fantastic job of getting back to us quickly when we've got an issue. You know, we unfortunately had a fire in one of our residences over the weekend. I show up there and Anthony's there, you know, telling the residents, we're having a pool party the next week here. So that's, that's the kind of responsiveness that we like to see. And that comes from, from the top there. So just thank you so much.
Thank you.
All members want to come up? And I just want to say, we do have some housing he's looking at in District Two. No, just kidding.
He lives in District Four.
Well, not everybody can be fortunate.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Does anybody else want to say anything? I'm sorry.
I just want to take a picture.
You want to take, they're gonna take a picture for you.
I got people.
We've got people that do that. Open your card. You're on the board too, okay? Say something.
Right here.
You want to get in there?
That's it. All right, right here now. Look straight down.
Do you want in the picture? You want to say a few words? You want to say a few words?
No, come on. You retired. So come on, get in. Hold up, hold up for a second.
I'll leave this for you too.
We worked together for many years.
Three, two, one.
Wait, wait, wait.
You want to get in there? Three, two. One.
Yeah, hold on.
Try another picture, please.
When you're ready.
Ready.
He got a picture of him. Try another picture, please.
All right, three, two, one.
One with the Delta camera.
With this camera?
The one in your hand.
One in your hands. That one, yeah.
Three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. All right. See you in two weeks. Thank you for that.
Hey, how's it going? Thank you.
How about you?
That worked out really well. Thank you for both of that.
See you, Janet.
Thank you. It was, she was really touched by it. She was really touched. She's crazy. She's 100 years old, but like, she's like 70, you know? It really is, it's unbelievable. But there's a, there was a funny, we, you know, we had the street sign, but it was covered with a, like a seal kind of thing. We had to pull it off. I'll send you a video of it. We pulled it, the roof it first before the thing came up. It was so funny. We had to get public works to give us a...
Yeah.
You see?
Do whatever you need to do, my man. Yeah. Yeah, very good.
And we have one will of council from Councilwoman Wilson.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents, whereas like many great American cities, the City of Pittsburgh's commercial office market is experiencing great uncertainty following the COVID-19 pandemic and massive economic changes in office needs and work habits. And whereas, as a result of these unprecedented changes, the City of Pittsburgh's downtown office market has suffered significantly higher vacancy rates with large amounts of office space available for sublease and a sharp overall decline in utilization. And whereas, the impacts of these trends have led to many downtown office buildings facing grim prospects of foreclosure, significant potential declines in property tax revenue, and the overall lack of market vitality. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh has taken a number of steps to address the problem and has collaboratively been working with various downtown stakeholders, including regional and downtown-focused civics groups, major corporate employers, real estate professionals, labor unions, trade councils, and housing advocates, to develop solutions that can immediately address the City of Pittsburgh's looming office market crisis and the need for more affordable housing. And whereas, one of the strategies identified by the City of Pittsburgh and its stakeholders encouraging the conversion of existing office buildings into mixed-use residential structures. And whereas, the conversion of existing office buildings into residential structures is very difficult in a challenging economic environment characterized by both high construction costs and high interest rates. And whereas, there are currently more than 300 million worth of shovel-ready projects in downtown Pittsburgh and potentially more than 1 billion of the same that could occur if responsive economic structures were put in place to facilitate the same. And whereas, the stakeholders have identified a significant potential source of federal funding for these office conversions in a bipartisan Revitalization Downtown and Main Streets Act, recently introduced by Representatives Mike Carey and Jimmy Gomez in the U.S. House of Representatives, which would provide 15 billion in tax credits to spur the conversion of underutilized office and other commercial buildings into housing, helping to revitalize American city centers while increasing the supply of affordable housing. And whereas, recognizing the critical role that the Revitalizing Downtown Act could play in revitalizing not just downtown Pittsburgh, but many Americans' great cities, while creating thousands of new affordable housing units and construction jobs, Pittsburgh City Council wishes to formally offer its support along with the stakeholders to support the passage of the Revitalizing Downtown Act. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh fully supports the passage of the Revitalizing Downtown Act. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the United States Congress to assist American cities by passing the Revitalization Downtown Act in order to provide tax credits to spur the conversion of underutilized office and other commercial buildings into housing, helping to revitalize city centers while increasing the supply of affordable housing.
Thank you. Anything there, Councilman?
Motion, oh yeah. Make comment, motion to approve though.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comment?
Thank you. First, I want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this. I appreciate you all being involved in this important message that we can send, which is that, you know, we support this effort by Congress and encourage them to pass this Revitalizing Downtown Act, to have more incentives to actually convert structures downtown. We've been here before with, with other wills of council to support initiatives that are at the federal level are being taken. And this is just another step in action that I believe should happen. You know, I think we often forget just how much these developments, especially conversions, would put more housing on the market and would drive down prices. There was just a great presentation that the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership just put together that shows that there are no vacancies downtown. And so obviously, a lot more people would love to live in this area, to, you know, walk to work and take advantage of all the great amenities that downtown can give. And in that presentation, it showed other cities that do have vacancies and why that is. I mean, some of the, some of the associations are that there have been a lot more development in those cities than our city. Their zoning have been, zoning laws have been relaxed, and, and they are less restrictive. And so in those cities, the, the rent prices have gone down. And we sit in the City of Pittsburgh with not only extreme vacancy in the old office buildings, but also the lack of, the lack of housing in this neighborhood. So without further ado, I'd just like to thank everyone for this, for this, and my staff that have worked on this. Looking forward to more things that Congress can do to support cities of our size. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm supportive because this is Councilman Wilson's district and your district. And if that's what you want there, then, you know, you think is best for your area, then I support that. But I do think that we've seen probably about seven revitalizations in the City of Pittsburgh, and none of it has touched southwest Pittsburgh. And so I'd like to see us also put the same focus and energy, not on downtown, but to know that these neighborhoods where a lot of our middle-class families live. And we need to have some development over there to keep people paying taxes, living in the city and wanting to do things. What I don't want to see is what I've seen over so many years is the Southwest becoming a dumping ground for everything anybody else in the city doesn't want. I mean, sometimes, Councilman Coghill and I talk all the time, and I tell them we should succeed from the City of Pittsburgh because we get that much, you know, attention that we'd probably be able to do it all on our own anyway. And I think sometimes our residents feel, feel very similar. Not that that's something, we love Pittsburgh and we want to see Pittsburgh thrive, but I think making sure that we're not just, that we're looking at downtown and having a healthy, thriving downtown, which is vital to the City of Pittsburgh, and including our neighborhoods. If, you know, downtown's not thriving, we're not thriving. But I do want to say that I think affordable housing isn't the only way to develop a city. We need to have some jobs. We need to have, so people aren't only living in affordable housing. I want people to be able to afford to live wherever they want to live. And so for that reason, I hope that we are also encouraging jobs in the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The will of council has been approved. Councilwoman Wilson?
I just wanted to say, you know, my comments were obviously focused on downtown, as you heard. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, I forgot to mention that it does say Main Streets here as well, downtown's a Main Street. So I believe if there are, you know, if this would pass, if there's units in your area that could be converted, they would have access to these funds as well.
Thank you. I don't know if I want them all converted to affordable housing. I want some affordable housing. I don't want all affordable housing. And as I mentioned, we seem to be the dumping ground for the City of Pittsburgh. So I'd like, I'd like some balance is what I'd like. That's all. For everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters concerned official action or deliberation, which may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Sider. I also have residence in Singapore. I'm a member of the American Society for Microbiology, American Chemical Society, American Physical Society, and the American Mathematical Society. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesoociety.org. A concern of council is to facilitate debate for and against policies to solve city problems via public comment. To many U.S. Americans locally and nationally, a true Dr. Dan Dennett, Steel Manning debate is information-rich, high intelligence, pro and con on a proposition, a claim regarding a problem or a policy, something you won't hear from Trump versus Harris. First, debate proposition, Shawara, African Hausa, City Offices of Mayor and Council, OMC, act effectively to counter biological and microbial threats, BMT. Pro, local Pittsburgh OMC passed anti-BMT protocols consistent with National U.S. American NHHS anti-BM terror regs with NIH and the CDC. Con, local OMC anti-BMT, no viruses, bacterias, fungicides to all, no biohazard suits to all, no information on the biological safety lab, microbial escape problem, Strasburger, no city county building or council room bioscans, gaining Trump and Harris on this and across the United States are zeros. Second, debate proposition, May Dai, Asian Nihongo, the City Offices of Mayor and Council, OMC, act to counter effects of chemical nanoparticle threats, CNT. Pro, local Pittsburgh OMC promote anti-CNT protocols citing with the National U.S. American DHS and EPA, anti-CTRMA regulatory procedures. Con, there are no chem-hazard suits available to all, no CCB or CR chem scan in this room, no info on the robotics production site, micro nanoparticle ejections in Lawrenceville and Squirrel Hill. Again, gaining at all are irresponsible. This is also true when it comes to Proposition Three, which has to do with radioactive threats to the city and to the, to the country. There are, there is support, but there is also counter.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Ralph Williams.
Good morning. Thank you, President Lovell and members of council for letting me speak today. My name is, those of you who don't know, my name is Ralph Williams. Councilman Charlin knows who I am because we've spoken many times. I live at 803 East Warrington Avenue, up here on Warrington Avenue in Allentown. My reason today, once again, is to talk about PCTV, but we're going to do that later. On Thursday of last week, we had a fire here in the building, in apartment 508. All right. The tenant who lives in that building is a problem child in here, has caused all kinds of problems, stole packages from me and other people in here. Housing never bothered to get rid of that woman and get her out of here. And now here's the result of it. We had a fire in the building. It ruined our fire compression system. Our security system is down. And we have ServPro here trying to fix the building. Housing showed up here, the folks who you gave an honor to, which again, I have no issues with that. It's great that they're giving homes to vets and things like that. I have no problem with that at all. Okay? And, you know, it was great that you gave an honor, Councilwoman Smith, to housing. It's great. I appreciate that. But what I don't appreciate is when I've been down here a few times to tell you about what goes on in my building and nothing gets done about it. Okay? Nothing from housing, nothing from City Council, nothing from the mayor. Okay? I have been on a personal crusade to get this building cleaned up of the people who live in here that caused problems. Now here's the result of it, this fire that this woman caused because she should have been evicted a long time ago for some stuff that she's done that's prior to this. Okay? Now housing has egg on their face now because of this fire. All right? I got stuck up in my apartment because I'm in a wheelchair. All right? I didn't get stuck, more or less. My wife made it down. My dog was, was already outside going for a walk. So I was up here in the apartment myself. Smoke's coming through my apartment. My wife had to tell the firefighters to come up here and get me. I'm supposed to be on the list for them to come up and get me when there's a major fire. I get in my motorized scooter, I go out to the lobby with the firefighters, and then I says, are you going to carry me down the steps? I thought the elevators didn't work. Oh, no, the elevators are working. Then they call in, and then they come back and they go, well, Mr. Williams, you can go back to your apartment. I got smoke in my apartment in here, and I'm in here by myself. My wife's downstairs crying because she's worried that I'm not down there. Okay? Firefighters did a good job of fighting the fire. That was wrong, what they did. They should have carried me down the steps, and they carried other people that were in wheelchairs down to the first floor. Why didn't they carry me down? Okay? All right? I didn't like that. I didn't like that, and I think that needs to be corrected, okay? And I didn't like the idea that housing was here Thursday and Friday, and they haven't been here since. They haven't called any of us to say how we're doing. They haven't done anything else other than...
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carmen Brown. You're currently on mute, Ms. Brown. Let's go to our next speaker and then come back to Ms. Brown. Our next speaker is Dan Reed Miller.
I'm not...
Oh, okay, we can hear you now. You're back on mute, Ms. Brown.
Okay, okay, I'm unmuted, okay. Whatever's being on y'all end. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. My name is Carmen Brown, I'm from the East Liberty area, and I wanted just to speak a little bit about the zoning hearing that I had went to. Well, a lot of the stuff that's being said about this zoning, I think it's not really accurate. I was there at the zoning hearing, and when the planning hearing, because it was under planning, planning decided to push this recommendation, and they only pushed it because of some, because they said that the zoning was in non, there was something about non-compliance, okay? Clear housing was in non-compliance, which was a whole big fat lie, okay? So I think that because when they recommended it, I think it was a false pretense, I think it's wrong, I think the person who was at Cory Lyman, he went and he discussed, he was telling them about this had to be rushed, which is, you know, so again, our voices were taken away. We had no opportunity to even speak about, you know, the zoning, like why they changed the zoning. We have no idea why they did this. Now, of course, the media, you know, Gani comes out and talks about some things, but this is not what was said at the hearing, the hearing, this was the actual hearings, planning hearings. And it was just a total big scam for them to pass the recommendations off and shoot it up to city council. So I think it was wrong, I think it was deceptive, disingenuous, that they're lying to, you know, the city of Pittsburgh residents. So again, this shouldn't have actually, you know, went to everybody in the community, all the district. It should not have, it should not have just went to a certain group, because they had, there was a July night memo, I'm pretty sure y'all see it, and it was a certain working group. But again, we didn't have the opportunity to find out why didn't zoning change this was even happening, and we're still, a lot of people are still confused. But I am going to take some other actions, so just letting everybody know, but one of the things that was recommended by planning is that there'd be meetings. Now, this has nothing to do with city council meeting with people, it's just supposed to be planning themselves because they never, they were not, they did not try to meet with anybody other than just, I guess, the people in the working group. So I guess the, so I have to be clear on the recommendations as well, but they did, they did put some conditions with the recommendations. So, but again, it was a big fat lie. Like I said, it's that they lied to planning, and that planning, everybody was in on it, but that's what it seems like to me. But I just think, but I just think that, you know, it was just...
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Now we'll move on to Mr. Reed Miller.
Thank you. Dan Reed Miller, Point Breeze. I'm going to speak quickly, so just please bear with me. Regarding red light cameras, I'm from Pittsburgh and live here, but for a while I lived in Florida, in an area where red light cameras were used. In fact, the Pinellas County Clerk of the Circuit Court's Office, responsible for processing thousands of citations from these cameras, actually urged officials from across multiple cities to stop issuing tickets until they fixed up to eight problems that the clerk himself said created a process that was unfair to citizens. In other words, safeguards have been empirically proven and shown not to work. As one example, just as a question, do police review video footage of each ticketed stop or still photos devoid of any context? Because in my lived experience with these cameras, people would stop behind the line, but you have to be on the line for the camera to register you if you want to make a turn. But if you pull up half an inch past the line, the camera goes off. Or if you manage to stop on the line, but say for two and a half seconds instead of three seconds, or three instead of five, whatever it is, before making your legitimate, legal, right-hand turn, the camera goes off. And we were all still getting these citations in the mail, so the safeguards don't work. That's why so many cities have tried but abandoned the program. So I'd like to know who's going to reimburse us for the half day of work we have to miss in order to show up, pay for parking, and appeal these unfair tickets? Further, the stats cited by the Pittsburgh City Council members to support this implementation are so vague, de and recontextualized as to be dangerously misleading, bordering on obfuscated, to villainize and punish drivers while removing any responsibility or agency from bicyclists who are the actual cause of the problem. For one, these stats fail to show that intersection accidents are caused by drivers and not by bicyclists. And I'm actually in favor of bicycling as a measure against climate change, but the reality is, and you can ask anyone in the city, I even randomly asked my Uber driver this morning on my way here, if she's ever seen a bicyclist stop at a red light and she cracked up because she knows it's true. The fact is, bicyclists want it both ways. They're happy to demand their rights as vehicles when it benefits them, even when bike lanes are present, swerving beside cars to pass, but then swerving back out into traffic, slowing down a lane of vehicles. But then they behave like they're riding unregulated toys and barely give a half glance as they roll through red lights when it's personally expeditious to do so. So all of this to say, if we have to share the road, should we not have to share the accountability? How about putting license plates on bicycles and holding them responsible for following the laws too, especially when they're one half of the equation that we're so concerned with protecting? I yield my remaining time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record, so you can be given three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. On the bike thing, I see bicyclist stop all the time. I use the bike lane, and a lot of other people in chairs do. Anyway, Saturday, I looked it up, and the city of Pittsburgh owns the property known as the Beachview Library. We were at an important meeting, yay, Beachview Historical Society, we got an amazing $20,000 grant to help with the seniors. We were at that meeting, went to get on the elevator, we were in the basement level of the Beachview Library. I was on the elevator with the most amazing lady from Italy, I love her. She started to get nervous because the elevator wasn't going anywhere. She got off, I ended up getting stuck. But here's the caveat, when they redid the library, there used to be a driveway going down to the back patio in the basement. It's not there. They just threw grass over, blood. There's a nice ornamental gate, I couldn't get out. Oh, we're sorry, we're sorry, but when it closes, you're going to have to leave. I ain't going anywhere without my chair. A mother in her stroller had to be carried up the steps. The website says that the Beachview Library, I went back and I looked at the article from 2015, it said that it was ADA accessible. That's a lie. If you can't answer these questions, can lieutenant admiral, retired Navy man in a chair get out safely? It's not ADA compliant. If a military man who lost his legs and limbs from bombs cannot exit safely out of a facility, it's not ADA compliant. I had to wait for the firemen, and they had a wonderful sense of humor. They had to put straps underneath the chair, carry it up the dirtway. My chair is damaged because the librarian people and mothers were trying to help me get out of there. This is not acceptable in 2024. Absolutely not acceptable. If you cannot answer that question, grandma can get out safely in a wheelchair or a walker. It's not ADA safe. What if we had Timmy? What if we had Timmy Mosico down here in his equipment, and he couldn't get out? We have other kids. That's the children's area, but it's also the conference area that they let public use the room. This is not acceptable. Now, if the library in Beachview is owned by the city, how many other properties are we being lied to about telling them? Here's one. I went to use the shower at Moore Pool, Moore Pool, typically I'm at Dormont Pool. There's no drop-down seat, there's no seat, period, to get a safe shower. Make our facilities ADA compliant, for real, not for pretend.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Calkiel, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 864, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Paramount Pursuits to Provide Technical Assistance to Applicants and Awardees of Projects from the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund for a Sum Not to Exceed $200,000 Over Two Years. And Bill 866, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter Into a Sponsorship Agreement with Clearview Federal Credit Union for the 2024 City of Pittsburgh Gingerbread House Display and Tree Lighting Ceremony at No Cost to the City.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 867, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Binkley Canovi Group LLC for Printing Services for the Popular Annual Financial Report for an Amount Not to Exceed $5,275 Over One Year.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 868, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Pittsburgh to Apply for Grant Funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund to Rehabilitate the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill 869, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Historic Former Carnegie Library of Hazelwood Phase One Roof Stabilization Repairs Project.
And Grant Proposal Includes An Ask of $300,000 With A Local Private Match of $150,000 For A Total Project Cost of $450,000 For This Stated Purpose. Bill 870, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Historic Former Carnegie Library of Hazelwood Phase One Roof Stabilization Repairs Project. The Grant Proposal Includes An Ask of $300,000 With A Local Private Match of $150,000 For A Total Project Cost of $450,000 For This Stated Purpose. And Bill 871, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Historic Former Carnegie Library of Hazelwood Phase One Roof Stabilization Repairs Project. The Grant Proposal Includes An Ask of $300,000 With A Local Private Match of $150,000 For A Total Project Cost of $450,000 For This Stated Purpose. Bill 870, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Sixth Street to Market Square Connector Project in the Amount Not to Exceed $244,556 For This Stated Purpose. And Bill 871, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Upper McCarterl Roadway Bridge Repairs Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $250,000 For This Stated Purpose.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 872, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning and/or the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Manchester Citizens Corporation for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds in the Amount of $13,852 to Support the City's Planning Effort to Study State Route 65 and Ways to Connect the Chateau and Manchester Neighborhoods.
And for myself, we could begin with the appointment.
Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill 873, Resolution Appointing Dr. Taya Cohen as a Member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire, September 1, 2027.
We need a motion to approve or to interview.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment has been approved, and now for the communication.
Bill 874, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grant's Office for the Week Ended September 6, 2024.
Need a motion to read, receiving, file?
Still moved.
Tekken.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 858, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September 4, 2024, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 800, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with the Law Firm of Fisher Phillips LLP in Connection with Issues Involving Labor Disputes at a Cost Not to Exceed $60,000 Over One Year. Bill 801, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Quit Claim Deeds, Convaying All of the City's Right, Title, and Interest in and to the City-Owned Property Located at 3133 Bruno Avenue in the 20th Ward of the City, designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 42H293 to City Steps Realty LLC, doing business as Second Chance Property Renovation and Consulting LLC, for $23,000 to be deposited into the three taxing bodies' trust fund account relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 802, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Noble Mediation LLC for Mediation Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $8,925 Over One Year. Bill 803, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Holly Bartlett and her attorney Swartz Carlton, PC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Filed... filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 804, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in favor of Mark A. Winters for arbitration services for an amount not to exceed $5,306.16 over one year. Bill 808, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant payable in favor of the Regional Opportunity Center doing business as Vibrant Pittsburgh for annual membership dues in the amount of $50,000. Bill 809, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with six organizations to produce arts programming as part of the Funding for the Arts American Rescue Plan Act allocation at a total cost not to exceed $625,000. Bill 810, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Casey Droge Cultural Productions for professional services relating to the administration and management of a program to disperse American Rescue Plan Act funds to support local artists impacted by COVID-19 at a cost not to exceed $160,000. Bill 811, Resolution Amending Resolution 92 of 2019 to provide for the extension of a professional services agreement by a term of one year with Dicky McCamey and Chill Coat for costs associated with the provision of legal services for the City Controller's Office at no additional cost beyond the original not-to-exceed amount of $30,000. And Bill 826, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 5543, Parking Meters, Section 543.01, Parking Meter Zones and Rates by creating a meter zone and a meter rate for Hazelwood Green in Chapter 543.01, Section B.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If, Councilwoman?
Oh, sorry.
Nope, okay. If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills have received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting on the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill 859, Report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for September 4th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 792, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions by adding Chapter 625 entitled Automated Red Light Enforcement Systems. Bill 795, Resolution Authorizing the City to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center for the purchase of pharmaceutical supplies, medications and related support services necessary for the daily operations of the city's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at an overall cost not to exceed $275,000 over five years. Bill 796, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with FMD Architecture LLC, doing business as Shelter Planners of America, to conduct a study of the feasibility of the city owning and operating its own animal shelter at a total cost not to exceed $49,400 over one year.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to amend Bill 792, Automated Red Light Camera Bill, with some technical amendments that our law department worked out with the parking authority. It's around severability and it's also, more importantly, around who appoints the officer who will be reviewing the camera, which is the parking authority.
Thank you. May we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the bills? If not, the bill is not ready for final action.
I actually do.
Councilwoman Smith.
Sorry, I just want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for putting this forward and typically I probably wouldn't vote for it because I didn't vote for it the last time it came up. But I am voting for it today because there are so many issues with traffic across the city of Pittsburgh, including speed racing and doing the burnouts all over the city. We need something that's going to help us address those issues, too. And enforcement is the only thing I think that's helping because we have speed bumps all over the city now and that's not stopping people. So I just want to say, I want to thank her for this part because I think there are people looking for some kind of relief and some kind of help across the city. I'm eager to see and I think we need to monitor it to make sure that it's working well. If not, start with just one or two cameras, you know, at a time. If it doesn't work, then we, you know, reevaluate that program. But I do want to thank her for coming forward with something because people are desperately looking for some relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
No on Bill 796. Aye on all other bills.
Uh, Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
On Bill 792, 795, nine ayes. And on Bill 796, eight ayes, one no.
Sorry. Can I change my vote on 796 to a no?
Yeah, excuse me. Me, too.
I'll take the roll again on 796.
I apologize.
I apologize. I want to do the same. I want to vote no on 0796.
So let's just read Bill 796 and do a roll call for just 796.
I apologize. Thank you, Councilman.
No, you don't need to read it over.
I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. Charlin?
No.
Mr. Coghill?
No.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
No.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
No.
Mrs. Strasburger?
No.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
On Bill 796, three ayes and six nos.
Bill number 796, having failed to receive the legally required number of votes, is defeated. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 868, I'm sorry, 860, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 4th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 812, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a utility easement agreement or agreements with Crown Castle Inc. to access, excavate, bore and install fiber internet connectivity infrastructure under, across and over city-owned property located at Pittsburgh EMS Medic III, Police Zone 6, 312 to 320 South Main Street, Block and Lot numbers 6A97 and 6A99 at no cost to the city. Bill 813, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a utility easement agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company to install, use, own, operate, maintain, repair, renew and finally remove five poles and one anchor, two pole, located on city-owned property, lot and block number 119B300 at no cost to the city. Bill 814, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works and Director of Finance to enter into agreements with Duquesne Light Company for vegetation management on parcel ID 34D20, anchor installation and maintenance on parcel ID 14N258, and pole and anchor installation and maintenance on parcel ID 33A200 at no cost to the city. Bill 817, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Developments Multimodal Transportation Fund for the Smallman Street Complete Street Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $2,279,662.30 with a local match of $117,100 from the 2024 capital budget for a total grant project cost of $2,396,762.30 for this stated purpose. And Bill 818, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a Consent and Order Agreement and Amendments with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection as decreed by the Commonwealth for the City of Pittsburgh to execute corrective action in solid waste management and providing payment of civil penalties at a city cost not to exceed $28,000 over one year.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Charlin, presenting on the Committee of Human Resources. Thank you.
Councilperson Robert Charlin presents Bill 861, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for September 4th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 794, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 96 of 2024, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with consultants and/or service providers for professional services in connection with civil service and MPO/ETC-required assessment and evaluation of public safety candidates and providing for payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $95,000.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill 862, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for September 4th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 797, Resolution Amending Resolution 471 of 2024, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with CIS, Center for Internet Security, for Albert M.D. Monitoring Application, which predicts malicious activity on the city network by monitoring, alerting and analyzing information gathered by sensors by increasing the approved 2024 amount by $38,880 for an amended total cost not to exceed $94,980 over seven years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, President? Eight ayes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilman Kahari Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Public, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill 863, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for September 4th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 798, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 2700 Penn Avenue, 6th Ward, Pittsburgh, PA 15222 at no cost to the city. And Bill 799, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a license agreement with Action Housing, Inc., the housing authority of the City of Pittsburgh and the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh in order to allow Action Housing, Inc. access to portions of the real estate located at 200 Ross Street to perform limited exploratory demolition as part of a feasibility study for the residential conversion of the property at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just want to first say that tomorrow is 9/11 and every 9/11, there's a group of us that volunteer to cook for all the first responders. It was started by Josie White, a firefighter's, um, wife and her whole family's firefighters. And it was started by her and she just did one or two stations. Now we are up to, we get all the way outside of the city of Pittsburgh, all of Allegheny County, just about is covered. Um, and so tomorrow I won't be here for the meeting. I will be delivering. We, I actually signed up for just my district, but now I have up to almost 500 people. So I have, with the help of the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, and with, with the Rotary and with the Kiwanis, they're all delivering the meals for us. So all I have to do is be there. So I just want to thank them all for their help. And I'll talk a little bit more about it next week because people donate a lot and I want to make sure I acknowledge them. But I also want to thank people for coming to the Lebanese Festival this weekend. It's the way I, at Pittsburgh, that, you know, that I have grown up in, and the way it always has been for me. Um, that we had so many different people there at the Lebanese Food Festival. They, they had thousands and thousands of people that attended in overflow parking. And it was just such a nice event because we had people, and I want to thank the people from Squirrel Hill, uh, from the Jewish community, coming over to spend time at our festival. The, we had a lot of people from the Muslim community. We had a lot of people from the Christian community. We had a lot of people with no faith-based reasons, you know, just to be there. So I just want to thank everyone for coming and it shows what we can do together as Pittsburgh. It's how Pittsburgh should be handling some of the things that we have going on across this world. If we can just take care of our little part where we're trying to do the best we can to work together to, um, live, you know, to peacefully coexist. I, I would, I would love for us to be an example for the rest of the country, and the rest of the world, actually. But I want to thank everybody for their coming out and being so supportive and working together. And the last thing I was, I would do, I'm eager to talk about the zoning that came through this week and we heard, you know, Carmen Brown speak a little bit about it. But to say that, you know, we're out of compliance is giving misinformation to the public. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about it because I have a lot of information about it now that I didn't have before. Um, but I do think that it's, it's a conversation we have to have because what my concern is what that housing does to, you know, you know, that zoning does to our side of town. It affects the whole city, but generally you have to understand our side of town has generally not gotten the same things as the East End has gotten. And there was the same consideration or respect. So it's, it's a lot of angst on our part about the zoning. So, um, thank you for, to you, Council President, for saying that we could sit down and try to work together through some of these concerns. I want to thank you for that. And I'm thankful to Jake Pollak for offering the same. But I do want to say that I think council needs to stand, this is a critical moment for the city of Pittsburgh. This zoning matters, what's, what's before us is significant and it doesn't deserve to be rushed. It deserves the time to really look through it, educate the public, understand it, and understand what it means to every part of the city of Pittsburgh. And we, as elected officials, owe our constituents that much, that we owe them time to, to really review this. So I, I hope that we'll take time and really go through this. Otherwise, I'm going to start the succession process for the city of Pittsburgh, Southwest Pittsburgh. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for members? Councilwoman? I'll come, I'll come to you next, Council, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to send a congratulations to Chuck Cooper III and, and the Cooper family. We just recently had the fifth anniversary of his father being enshrined in the Basketball Hall of Fame and many of us know Chuck Cooper, the first African American um, ever to be drafted into the NBA, basically the Jackie Robinson of pro basketball, who's a, a native of the East End of Pittsburgh and from my district as well as, uh, was, I think, the first director of, of the City Department as well when he was the Director of Parks and Rec. So I just wanted to send a shout out to the Cooper family. It's such a great milestone. I look forward to celebrating it in a more formal fashion in the near future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just, um, you know, I just did want to make one comment on, um, on Bill 796 regarding the study for a potential animal shelter, you know, city-run animal shelter. You know, I, I agree that it seems far-fetched, you know, and given sort of the, the state of finances right now, it doesn't really, it just doesn't seem like something that, uh, that we should be pursuing. But I, you know, I want to underscore that this request was just for a, a study to, to understand the feasibility of it. And, um, you know, Chief Madden is, I mean, I just can't think of a more solid person, um, working here at the city. His team is incredible. It's this tiny little team, this, you know, enormous amount of wildlife that we have in Pittsburgh. So many, you know, like the increase in abandoned, excuse me, abandoned pets and whatnot since COVID, you know, people getting COVID pets and then like now they don't want their COVID pets anymore. Um, you know, just for him as a colleague, I sort of, you know, he, he obviously would like to have this, right? This is obviously something he would like to have. And I don't know, it would have been nice to, um, to at least let, let him, you know, let him see if it was, if it was feasible. Um, I mean, I don't know, like maybe it could have been a source of revenue to the city, but I don't know because we don't, you know, we're not going to do a study. So at any rate, I may, I may check in with the controller to see if maybe there's a mechanism to do some type of an audit, you know, like how much money are we spending with our third-party partners and et cetera, et cetera. Maybe there's some other way to kind of figure out how, uh, the feasibility of that type of proposal. But at any rate, I just wanted to, just wanted to say that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin?
Uh, uh, thank you, Council President. Real quickly here, um, I wanted to touch on that. The legislation that came over for the, um, veterinary shelter was in response to an audit from the Controller's Office, um, that the administration sent over. I do think it's important to acknowledge the Controller's Office does a lot of audits and gives us a lot of recommendations. Um, and it is a little peculiar that this is the only one that ended up with a feasibility study. Uh, but that's actually what I wanted to talk about. Um, the, uh, point that I wanted to make, on Friday night, uh, late Saturday morning, or early Saturday morning, Officer, or Sergeant Andrew Robinson, um, from my Southside Entertainment Patrol was injured inside of a fight at Oddballs, a bar on East Carson Street. Uh, Sergeant Robinson is the exact embodiment of what we want to see in a, uh, community officer. He is someone that knows all of the businesses, knows the owners, knows the, the people, the patrons that come and enjoy those businesses, knows the residents. Most of us have his, um, have his number there. Um, he, you know, the success in increasing the safety in Southside that we've seen is in large part due to Sergeant Robinson. Um, and having him out for the foreseeable future is going to be a big loss for Southside. Uh, last night we had the Southside Community Council meeting and I can tell you that we are all hurt. It feels like we lost a brother, um, because of the recklessness at this bar. And myself, Representative Benham, Representative Abney, and Senator Jay Costa all put out a statement together and will be working to make sure that this bar, um, cannot operate, uh, on the Southside anymore um, because they cannot make, uh, this establishment safe. So we'll be calling on LCE, LCB, um, the District Attorney, the, uh, Mayor Gani's Disruptive Properties Task Force to make sure that this bar is shuttered and, um, and no one else can be hurt from that. So I will be asking for support from my members here, um, to help me, uh, make sure that we can get this, this bar shut down. And please keep Sergeant Robinson in your prayers here. He's in, in good spirits, but he's going to be, uh, out for, for quite some time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first I want to say to Councilman Charlin, I saw that video. Um, I don't think it's indicative as to the progress that you've made down there in the past year or so. But I certainly will support you and your efforts to try to get this place shut down. It seems like it's been a nuisance. I know you've talked to the DA's office about it and, um, you know, I'm hoping you get somewhere with that and get the proper, um, requirement to shut them down because, uh, it seems like a bad, bad apple down there. The other thing was I want to piggyback over what Councilwoman Kale Smith was talking about, the Lebanese Festival. I mean, it's just incredible. It really is. And, uh, you know, Teresa is like the queen. You sit with her and they all come and pay homage to her. Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And the amount of people from the 14th Ward, I was so happy to see that they crossed the river and came and participated and enjoyed in all the fun. And Teresa's brother, Michael, is, um, I can't never remember his official title. Would you please?
Core Bishop, Core Bishop.
He's a bishop?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Super nice people. Uh, you know, they're such a blessing to have in my district, in that church. I love the Lebanese people. They remind me of the Italians, except I think they have more fun and, uh,
We smoke kukas.
I stayed away from the hookah this year. So, uh, so I just want to thank, and I want to congratulate your brother who's being honored, I think, in the next month or so for, uh, his years of service, is it?
Yeah.
So, so, okay. But, uh, no, I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I just also thank Councilman Coghill because he comes to every one of the events and the Beachview community is so welcoming and so understanding because we pretty much take over the entire area between Beachview and Banks. And I just want to thank them all for their patience with us. They're just so generous and so kind. And they, they enjoy it in. They come to the events.
They're all so happy. I mean, you, you basically shut down Lower Beach, but that's, that's like one day or three days a year that, that's, it's okay because it's nothing but fun and great food, by the way. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any, any further members? Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just want to speak to the, the shelter bill that was just struck down here. First, I just want to, um, make sure the, the vote's correct. It was 5-4.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. What was read aloud was 6-3, so I just want to make it clear. So it was a pretty, pretty tight vote. And, uh, kind of, um, you know, a lot of people changed their vote. And I was just, you know, based on last, uh, based on last week, I, I guess I didn't get the sense that it was going to go down like that. And I'm thinking like, you know, usually when we have more questions, we try and get answers. So I'm hoping that in the future that we can hold the bill, bills like that so that we can work through that. I know that that was a request that my office made uh, to, to start, you know, exploring that option my first year in office after, um, discussions with the current shelter and animal control. So I was definitely curious on, you know, getting some of those questions answered that you all had. And so I'm just surprised at the vote and hopefully we can work through things, um, in the future in a different way of how it went down today. So, just want to make comment.
Can I just thank him for those comments? I just want to say, I think previously when administrations have bills, not, not always, but they did try to work with all council members to make, make us aware of those, those things, or whatever bills they were putting forward. So I think that was part of it was that we didn't, we had a lot of questions still. So I think, I appreciate that you say, let's try to work through everything. Because I think at nine times out of 10, we're going to be supportive. But there's going to be a time, you know, once in a while here, we're going to differ or we're going to say this is not okay. And so I think it's, I think, you know, I think it's good to work through everything. So thank you for bringing that up.
Uh, I guess the difference for me is that it's, um, you know, we can't, we couldn't introduce a bill like that for a year now. Whereas if we hold it, then we could have, you know, brought it back in three months.
Right.
Something like that. So just my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you. It's important.
Any other members? If not, we do have meeting announcements this afternoon at 1 o'clock. Council will hold an executive session on Bills 839, 840 as it relates to ongoing litigation matters. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 10th at 10:00 a.m., Council will hold our Standing Committee Meeting. Speaker Registration will close at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Also tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 706 as it relates to naming the city-county building Room 458, the Tim McNaughty Press Room. Speaker Registration will close at 12:00 noon. To speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. All members are present, uh, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.